Oh, removed it. Perfect. Thanks. I'm looking for it, but I guess it's out there. So the Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 1:07 in the Newton Town Hall. Of course, I would like to sneak a whack. (inaudible). (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, Mr. Doggett is unavailable on short notice, so he's not attending. Ms. Rowden has offered to take some meeting minutes, but it's also recorded, so we can go back in time and document the meeting. Remotely, we have Annie Collier and Ms. Barbara White, and we have a few people remote in space as well. And Mr. Doggett, looks like he is also remote, so he probably will be taking minutes as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this is Annie. Dan Guy was just in a school -- can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Was just in a school budget committee meeting, and he may very well be on his way. I don't know.
He is on his way. He texted me saying he was running a few minutes late. So I apologize for the disruption when he walks in, but he should be here. So it's kind of some formality issues or life as we're rolling. But we do have a forum in person, so we are ready and good to help. And I don't know who's causing feedback, but... So the first item on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp., of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. And just to give a quick synopsis, this is for a building that has already been constructed, and the applicant is seeking to, in a very high level, draw lines on a piece of paper to create a condo unit that can be purchased or leased off separately. So this is not a new building. There is no real new proposed construction, and there's a few outstanding issues that the applicant is looking to rectify or potentially rectify to close out, let you bring the site into compliance. If you want to take the floor.
Sure. Good evening. Barry Guyer with Jones &amp; Beach here for the applicant. We are working through a couple of the issues, specifically the drainage and the retaining wall issues, so at this time, we would ask for a continuance to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rowden, do you have any comments?
I don't. Beyond what was presented the last time the applicant was here, no new information has been supplied at this point. I would want to clarify if they are asking for a continuance for two weeks from now or for a month from now. I don't know where you are with some of the items.
We would ask for a continuance for a month.
Okay. And I don't have our -- a month would be the 7th of February, and I unfortunately don't have.
It would be the 14th of February.
Okay. Our next meeting for a month, that would be like six weeks. That works? Okay.
Site.
To accept the continuance.
So Mr. Marshawn, second motion, and seconded by Mr. Lavoy. Aye. If you are ever doing roll calls, is it easier for you to do roll calls, or do you want me to hold them?
If you can say your name, you have to do a roll call because of it being online, so...
Mr. Moran, aye. Barbara?
Yes, this is Barbara White. Aye.
Try to go in order. Mr. Marshawn?
This is...
So, go ahead, Annie, sorry.
This is Annie. I say yes.
I'm Marshawn, aye.
Jordan Piper, aye.
And Mr. Guy.
Aye.
I have intended.
Mark Lavoy, aye.
Sorry you seconded it. I apologize. Okay. So we will continue that item until February 14th, 2023. Second on the agenda is a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp., of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 357 and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-4. So this project, this application has been in front of us for a couple of weeks or months at this point in time. They have gone and made a few substantial revisions to the drawing set to their -- in tandem with the planning board in front of the zoning board, and I don't want to get in the weeds, but they've made some revisions to bring the project, or based on feedback from the ZBA, to move the project forward. Do you have any comments?
I think it might be easier to let Barry give an overview of what they provided than I can give my comments.
Okay.
That's okay.
Good evening. Once again, Barry Guyer with Jones &amp; Beach Engineers for the applicant. So since the last meeting, we did update the existing conditions, reviewed and revised the grading drainage as required, and updated the drainage report. We also made revisions as requested by the town engineer, which included improvements to DO -- or to Route 108, and that are required by the traffic analysis and improvements on the entrance road, retaining walls and the guardrails. We also updated the puzzle extension, that's the dead-end road, so that the turnaround is off of the existing easement. We also revised Building Number 3 height to meet the building height regulations. We were able to attend the ZBA meeting last week. The ZBA granted all the requested variances. So per the ZBA, the project can now be constructed per the plans that the board has in front of it. DOT is still reviewing the DOT driveway application, but we have been assured that the DOT will work with the applicant to modify the current driveway permit. AOT has been submitted. We're waiting for that review. And as the waiver regarding the hydrological study was denied at the last meeting, we have authorized the completion of the study, and the study is underway. With that, take any questions.
Do you have a timeline of when you anticipate the hydrogeology study to be completed?
I do. That should be done in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
I can't comment on DOT. They are their own animal.
So I have a couple of items. I'm not going to cover what Barry just stated for updates. There is a note still related to Plastow that continues to be on the plan set that should be removed about the need for Plastow's approval, updating, putting any variances that they got on the plan set, that the hydrogeologic study does need to be complete to be compliant with your regulations. One item that I did speak with the town engineer about, and I believe it was relayed to the applicant, is requesting that they provide either information or commentary about any potential fill that needs to be brought onto the site, either from onsite or from outside the site, and how that may impact the hydrogeologic aspects of the site. And an additional thing is that there has been a new community water system applied for through DES that may not be showing up on DES's wells that are just over on the Plastow side of the property. I don't have any more specific information other than it's the Gunstock Water System, Gunstock Road. May have very little impact, but because it is so new, it may not be triggering DES's one-stop data for the hydrogeologic report. Additional items, that's really it. There are some items with the stormwater that do seem to be more consistent with your regulations, but I would continue to recommend that any -- that the roadway that goes over the gas line easement, that they still get a letter from, I believe it's Unitil who actually owns the gas line easement, stating they have no concern with the roadway that goes over it that is proposed. I think moving the turnaround off will help in that. And that's the extent of my comments. We did receive the updated information on January 5th, so there wasn't a lot of review time. I would strongly recommend you have Mike McNally review the updated plan set.
Do we have any comments from the board?
Just maybe a progress report. I know it's wintertime, but is there more than 14 trees? Are they on order?
That was part of the prior application.
I see. Okay.
So this is for the new road and four buildings?
Correct. Phase two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Barbara. I do have just maybe a clarification on that note that Ms. Rowden had alluded to. Besides the note that's on the cover page, that same note, I believe, is number 16 on Sheet C2, which needs to come off.
That's correct. It appears on a handful of other sheets, just anywhere where it appears it should be removed.
Okay.
And I know the applicant, or Barry stated last time that they're working with Plastow to submit the application that they would need approval for in Plastow.
Yeah, so just to clarify, that was a note that they requested on the subdivision part of it when we attended Plastow. So I just carried that forth. When we go in front of Plastow for this project, then we can clarify if they want that or not.
Okay. Based on past correspondence, they're most likely going to want that removed.
Correct.
Barbara, do you have any other comments?
No, I think I read somewhere that the applicant is going to be going in front of Plastow on January 18th. Is that correct?
We didn't make that meeting, so we will be going to the February meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we don't anticipate a whole lot to occur in Plastow. There's no work proposed in Plastow yet, so I assume it's going to -- just a formality.
So I have a couple of questions of the drainage report. I took a look at it fairly brief, and it appears that there's discrepancies between the drawings and portions of the drainage report, specific to elevations and water volume of infiltration basins. I also had a question about, there's a note in here specifically on Analysis Point 2, and the report comments that there's a minor increase in the 2 and 10-year. I'm looking at the 2-year flows, and it's about 36% greater. The post-flow is 36% greater than the pre-flow. It goes and totals up the two points of analysis, which may be acceptable, it may not be acceptable depending on the final discharge. Professionally, my experience is that DES is going to comment, and you can't just add two points of analysis to justify that the post-flows have reduced. So I think some additional justification needs to be added to that or clarified so that we have a better understanding. I guess my concern is specifically on other projects in the community that Butters have concerns about flooding. So it appears that the backend supporting material is generally consistent. I haven't dived into this well, but the -- or I didn't have the opportunity to dive into it, but the groundwater recharge volume calculation tables have not been updated. They were printed in September while the backend was done in December.
Okay. I'll definitely check into that.
Anybody else have comments? So can you discuss some of the reductions that have been made for impacts or pulling back?
Say that again?
Like reductions in disturbance or revisions to the drawings that were made specifically for to address comments from the ZBA?
I just flipped to Seat 3 to give you a better overall view of what happened, is basically the whole project squeezed in from the exterior, and the wetland buffer impacts have been reduced to nil. The only wetland buffer impacts or wetland impacts are associated with the roads. They don't just drag this over. But you can still hear it. So we still have wetland impacts and wetland buffer impacts associated with the road coming in from Route 108. We've reduced all the other impacts except for Puzzle Lane when we go over the...
Which is the one up by the turnaround there you're talking about?
Correct. Yep. So then we have an impact associated with the crossing at the wetland going to the Puzzle Lane extension dead end. So other than that, all the wetland impacts that were previously shown for any of the grading and drainage have been removed.
And what are your -- loosely, your setbacks are about 200 feet now, or...
Well, the setbacks for structure is a 200-foot structure setback. So we had, the only relief that was granted by the zoning board for the structural impacts was for the entrance road and those items associated with the entrance road, which retaining wall, guardrail, signs, anything of that nature. So we have not asked for any additional relief beyond that for the 200-foot setback. So everything is setback greater than 200 feet, except for the entrance road, where we only have a 50-foot right-of-way to actually access the property.
Okay. Do we have questions, comments from the board?
I just do, point of correction, this is Barbara. I just do need to tell you that you kind of took them out of order because you were now talking about number one. And so the amended site plan, which is continued to February 14th, is number two, and you took that first. So you kind of flip-flopped the -- because we're talking about the business condos right now, the new four-building condominium, right?
No, we -- that was continued, Barbara.
There's actually a discrepancy on your agenda. The tax maps are listed flip-flopped.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand. So that's 27-4. I was actually confused about that, too, because I was looking at the plans and they were...
We saw the same.
At a different time. Okay. Thank you for that, Barbara.
Just so we get the right one together. Thanks.
So the agenda, the 27-3, 27-4 are opposite, but we are...
You're taking the cases in the correct order. The first case was with four existing buildings. The second case is the property that has no buildings on it currently.
Which is 357 and 9 Puzzle Lane.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
Welcome.
This is Annie. The site plan that we have in front of us says Lot 27-3. So that's another source of confusion. I mean, that's the first one that we were looking at. This is 27-4 for the four new buildings?
No.
Is that correct?
Excuse me?
I'm confused.
We can hear you, Jim.
Building 3, 7, 5, and 9, that is on 27-4, and that is the amended site plan. 27-3 is the site plan, no buildings have been built, that is off South Main Street, 108.
Okay. So the interpretation would tend to tell me that what is marked here on this site plan that I have in front of me says Lot 27-3, and that should be 27-4?
No.
So 27-3 is the lot that has no buildings on it, for clarification. What is on the site plan is correct.
Yeah.
What is on the agenda is flip-flopped. 27-3 has no buildings on it.
Right. Correct.
So it's the agenda that's flipped.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So we're generally discussing the...
The lot with no buildings, which is Lot 27-3.
The agenda incorrectly listed them. The drawings are correct.
And you handled them in the correct order as well.
Right. Okay.
So question, just to be, you know, official. When you called the public hearing on the first one, that was on 27-4, is that what you said? And that's what we continued? I just want to make sure that our motions and hearing are correct. And this one is 27-3?
I think that's correct, Annie. Yeah?
Yeah. I have in my notes that what you said was to continue 27-4.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Barbara?
So Lot 27-4 is the lot that currently has buildings on it that they are trying to have become condominiumized. The lot, the application we are currently talking about is the undeveloped lot that they are proposing to put four buildings onto and a roadway, just to clarify.
So in other words, Mr. Fitzpatrick, they continued the lot right behind your property for another month. So we went on to, now we're on the other one to where there are no buildings, but they want to build on them, which will be on the backside of, what's the...
Howard Lane.
Howard Lane. That's the lot that we're talking about now.
So on the first case, where there are the buildings currently existing, they asked for a continuance. No new information was supplied for today's meeting. They asked for a continuance. They were granted a continuance now to February 14th. Planning Board doesn't, it's the 14th is the first meeting due. Because there was no new information, it's up to the Planning Board's discretion whether they want to open it up for public comment. Because there was no new information, that wasn't...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Jim? Yep.
The agenda is correct. I'm looking at it on my cell phone. First public hearing was continuation of 125 Development Corp.'s request for a four-building condominium site plan off of South Main Street. That is 27-3. The second item on the agenda was the continuation of the same applicant for the amended site plan at 357-9 Puzzle Lane. So the agenda's correct. The discussions were just flawed.
May I offer a suggestion?
Yes. Yes, please.
Was it considered that the Planning Board thought that the first case you were discussing was the property that currently has buildings on it, where no new information has been received to date, and the applicant requested a continuance to February 14th?
That was my understanding, and maybe this is my fault because I gave a synopsis of, this is the property that currently has buildings on. They want to draw lines on the plan so they can condoize it, create a condo unit, and then potentially sell or do whatever they want with them. So that's how I opened that meeting, and then we discussed the meeting with that project that we have not received any additional information. The applicant has then requested a continuance, that they were working on the drainage, and unless the applicant has some other comment or thoughts, or thought we were talking about a different property.
I would suggest that we go back and potentially revote on the prior project for the continuance, and then we can open this one back up, just to be clarified.
Yeah. So to do that, Mark has rescinded his second. You have to rescind your initial motion, and then you guys can have a new motion.
I rescind my second.
And then Bob?
And I'll rescind the motion.
Okay. Now, if you would want to choose to open it up to any public comment, you can. I don't think you need to, because they've asked for a continuance, and there's been no information, but that's up to you.
I have...
I don't see the purpose of it, because there's no, there's no new information right now.
Okay.
And we, and there's going to be a public comment on the next item that will probably be more relevant, and there will be new information that people can comment on. That's my opinion.
In that being said, I will make a motion to grant the continuance for Tax Map 14, Site Plan 3, 5, 7, and 9, Puzzle Lane on Block 1, Lot 27-4.
Is that correct?
It is for...
The continuance until February 14th.
It's for Tax Map 14, 1, 20, 7, 4, which is where the four buildings are, just for clarity.
Okay. So can I safely second that?
Yes.
I'm going to safely second that, and we'll do the roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Annie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good grief.
I apologize for the confusion on my part.
It's a bit confusing because you have the same applicant on a project with four buildings on each project, separated by one tax base.
We're having a public comment. Doesn't make any sense. Why are they all leaving?
They all wanted to talk about that.
Okay.
All right.
So you were discussing reductions in area and impacts and pulling the buildings in to...
For Lot 27-3, just to clarify.
Lot 27-3.
So we've reduced our wetland impact to 3,637 square feet, all of it for the roadway access, and our buffer impact to 50,406 square feet, the vast majority of it for the roadway impact.
I don't have any more comments at this point in time.
I guess I just have concerns about how we're regulating the fill. In particular, I know that Jennifer mentioned that, like, looking into how that may impact the site. So I guess I more have a question about, like, how do we, how do we, what's, how does that, how is that regulated? Is that the state? And then how it's used ultimately? Do we have McNally review that, or how does that work?
So you should certainly have Mike McNally review it. It will be more fruitful, I think, when you get your hydrogeologic report as well, which is why I asked him to comment about it. As far as the quantity of fill, that is something you can ask the applicant to address. There are a couple of ways of dealing with that. to address. There are a couple of ways of dealing with that, but the ultimate amount is they are giving you the elevations that they propose the final site to be versus what it is now.
I just want the fill to be clean. That's my biggest concern. And how are we going to ensure that that's the case?
The majority of it is coming from site. It's not, I mean, they do have concrete that they crush and they use for fill, which is clean. And the, the stuff that they bring in is regulated by the state. It has to be clean. You can't bring, you know, contaminated soils onto the site. But the vast majority of it is going to be from the site. And the road is on fill, but the majority of the, the buildings, the parking areas, that's just, you know, kind of reshaping what's already out there.
Do you have an idea of the cut fill, like a ballpark? Are we talking like 10,000, 50,000?
I don't have that number, but I can get it for you.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the, I just quickly look at the road, it's fill, but then there's other, there's some decent cuts you're pulling on a lot out of the basins. Like, it's a big site, too. Like, you can lose a lot of material or need a lot of material pretty quickly.
Correct. In the back corner of it, there's a lot that can be taken out of the site, and even the, the back corner of, of building two sets, there's a lot of fill that can come out of that as well.
It's almost two acres, the building itself.
Right. Yeah, no, this, it, it looks a little, you know, small when you look at it like, like this, but you got to remember it's 146-acre site. So it's comparatively, you know, it, the buildings are very large.
Okay. That was it for my questions.
I have a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Barbara.
One of the things that we had asked for previously was sign detail. Is that in this new plan? Because I wasn't finding it.
There's a few signs on somewhere.
It's loc, it's located on Sheet D2, Barbara. And it's very similar to the, the existing sign on, at Puzzle Lane. It's basically a, a low-wall mounted sign.
Great. Now I see it. Thank you very much.
Where is D2? There's also a stop sign detail, and a few other, some of DOT sections. Have you, or has the applicant prepared any opinion of probable cost for, like, roadway construction, or major milestones, or anything?
You're looking for a cost for the roadway?
And a few other, like, major items, just in case we were looking for, just to make sure the project was done, if there was an interest in bonding any of this. I'm trying to get it ahead of you now, so if it does come up, that we don't have to continue this for another hearing.
Yeah, if, if the board is interested in potentially bonding some of the items, then we should have an idea of what those would be now. They have done quantity takeoffs and pricing takeoffs, but not specifically for specific items, I should say.
Okay. I think I would like to see what you, what the, you as the applicant, would anticipate, I guess, major milestones, probably not inclusive of the buildings, major sites of the work. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board?
So that, that bonding detail, you actually require in your regulations as well. Given the scale of this project, one thing that the Planning Board can define is what is considered substantial completion of the project, if they get to the point of an approval. And what that does is it grandfathers them if they have reached substantial completion within two years. It grandfathers them from zoning changes for up to five years. So you can define what that is. It's typically your basic site work, not necessarily construction of the building. But that is just something to keep in mind. That would be a pretty typical.
By grandfathered meaning that if there's a change in the zoning ordinances, they're allowed to...
Continue to proceed.
As approved.
As approved.
Okay, so it not only protects the town, it potentially protects the applicant as well?
And that's only if there were to be a zoning change that impacted them, just to be clear.
Okay.
I don't anticipate anything specifically, but it's good to define it at a conditional approval stage.
So if, I'm just going to pick something. If the no disturb setback change from 200 feet, that's, I only know, it's the only thing I really know about the ZBA, to 100 feet, they could then still continue with that 200-foot?
Yes.
Or, sorry, the other way around?
Yeah, if it went to like 300 feet, they could still continue with 200 feet.
Okay, thank you. Does the public have any comments on this, this project, not the previous project? I think there's only one other person. I can't see how many people are actually online. I'm not sure if it's just Lisa.
There are no raised hands.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
So one other just thought logistically. I do recommend to get your town engineer to review the current plan set. You may also want to have him review the hydrogeologic report, so just the timing of when that might be received, to allow him enough time to then review it, what that might mean for any continuance.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara. I'm not sure whether the board wants to entertain bonding for any of the landscaping before we say okay to this project?
Is the landscaping the last one?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you typically would want to have some landscaping bonded as part of it, but I don't think that at this point you need to present. If it's something you might want, and they can provide it, great.
I would agree with you, Barbara. My thought is that they would provide a spreadsheet of items that they would anticipate should be bonded, that then KV partners can review and provide their input on. And I'm just...
Great, thank you.
Saying like, I don't know, the road, infiltration basins, erosion control, and I'm just picking up a couple things, and maybe seating, site stabilization, maybe they provide that, and KV partner says, oh, you forgot guardrail, and we would recommend adding that. Or tree plantings. Because they do have a few trees, but I would agree. So what, disappear, Barry. For continuations, I think it's going to take KV partners a week or two to dig into this.
Should we just continue to February 14th again, so we have them both on the same night?
We can do...
I don't know how fast the hydrogeologic report, when you say weeks, is that two weeks, or is that four weeks, so?
We're expecting it in a couple weeks, but that could extend. But I would, we would request that it be extended, or continue to the 14th of February, and hopefully at that time, we have more information for you. We will have more information, whether we have the hydrogeological study or not will be a question.
Okay. And you will be able to have the information about those bonds?
Yep.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara. I, I do want to strongly recommend that, on the bonds, that we ask for cash bonding rather than letters of credit. We don't really take letters of credit anymore for bonding.
Aye. Jim, has that been revised, or?
Offhand, I don't recall, to be honest. That would be a better question for Jim.
Okay. I would, I would agree. It, they tend to work a little bit better, if needed. Hopefully not, but... Yep, I would agree with you, Barbara. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you.
Okay. So somebody would like to make a motion?
So with all that being said, I will make a...
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
My name's Coleman McDonough, I'm the owner. You might want to, you know, run that by town council, that last comment. It's illegal to make a cash, cash bond. A letter of credit from a bank is accepted by any town or city in the state of Plas, um, state of New Hampshire. And I think you'll find that, that some accountant will advise you on that.
So the, the town should go with whatever the town's policy is for accepting of lines of credit, bonds, or sureties?
Which, which is, Jim, a letter of credit, and they've always accepted a letter of credit from a credible bank or institution, financial institution.
Okay, I will chat with town council.
Thank you.
And they can advise us on the town's policies and legal responsibilities or rights. Thank you for that comment.
So I have, Bob made a motion.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we continue this to February 14th for Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. Second.
Can we, this is Annie. Can we add to that the request for bonding and...
He said he's going to bring all that, Annie.
I'm sorry?
He already said that he's going to bring all that information.
She's asking if you can add that to the motion.
So Dan has seconded, so he'd have to agree to a friendly amendment if you wanted, if you wanted to add that you also are requesting they bring bonding estimates?
I do.
As stated.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to try and do this. Dennis?
Aye.
Annie?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, good evening.
Good night.
Very much. Okay, next on the board business is acceptance of the minutes from December 27th, 2022.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Sorry, I have a point of correction. It looks like it's the wrong date at the top, unless I'm completely wrong. It says December 17th.
That's correct.
Yep.
December 17th is correct, or December 27th?
No, it's 27th.
So we've got to edit that.
Right. That's a typo. Take care of it.
I was also on via Zoom, not in person.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as of 12/27/22's meeting with said adjustment.
Adjustments, there's two.
Second.
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Annie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Going to be a priority?
I hope to never do it again.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 I was watching.
Okay, second is, or next on the agenda is approval of the NEPRA manifest. Please bear with me one second. And I don't have a printed copy on me.
It's $1,1260.20.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to approve that? A majority...
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
There should be a copy in a manila envelope at the, on the little shelf at the top of the stairs going into the Planning Board office.
The office is locked, unfortunately.
No, 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 right at the, if you go up the three stairs, the, Jim looks to her left, there's a manila envelope. Oh, wait, it is. Tom, it's on the right, not the left.
Perfect. I was just going to sign it and get it over to Lisa, but electronically, but I will take care of that now.
Okay. Shall I say everybody's names?
Yes, please.
Dennis?
Aye.
Annie?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Next is the update on the capital improvement plan.
Jordan, do you want to take this one, or do you want me to?
We have received from the other Mark, a pretty comprehensive report. I privately commented to him that, just thanking for his work, and there'll be a lot to discuss. At this time, there is no scheduled meeting for the subcommittee meeting. That'll have to add.
And, yeah, we will need to discuss that. But I'm not going to schedule that right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Both of you.
And thank you to Mark Andrews?
Yes.
Andrews. And next is update of the land use chapter and master plan.
All right, so you should all have this in front of you. And Annie and Barbara, I will let you know, there has been no change from the previous version that was sent out in December, except for a couple of very minor typos that Barbara found, and Heath Street is also now spelled correctly.
Thanks.
So based on, I'll admit, not a lot of discussion from our last meeting, but I think, but I also didn't hear any comments from anybody. It seems that the recommended, basic recommendations and action items that I did draft seemed amenable to folks. We had gone through to make sure that it coordinates with your vision, which was published about eight, about a year ago, 18 months ago, somewhere in that ballpark. So just to verify that, yep, I double-checked it. And with that, I do think you might be ready for public hearing. This does incorporate the public outreach that was done. We had had about 55 people take the land use survey that was specific, but we had also... had land use topics come up with the larger master plan survey back in 2021. So you've gotten a lot of input. You've actually gotten more than most towns get on their land use chapter. So with that, I think that if you are ready to move it to public hearing, you certainly can. I don't know that we would get a lot of additional feedback, but certainly that is the time you can still make amendments or not accept this if that's what you choose to do. But it might be easier for potentially incoming new board members in March to have this be completed so they can start on something new.
Can we, I don't want to add more things to the agenda on the 14th, but since we're definitely having a meeting on the 14th, and I know Jim is always cognizant of budgets.
I do believe that Jim had contemplated having the policies and procedures manual go on the same public hearing notice, because you do have to have a public hearing, as this chapter.
Okay.
To help sort of reduce the cost of that notice. So you potentially could do it for the 24th?
Of this month.
Of this month.
Right, because we've got nothing else on the agenda right now. That would be the perfect time to do it.
I will say on the 24th, I would like to talk to you about the final approval for the HOP grants for the housing chapter aspect of things. So that would be a good work session slash public hearing potential.
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yep.
We can't do it on the 24th, i.e., there's a three-week lead time. So it would either have to be the first February meeting or the second February meeting.
I will say if there's any interest, I can come on the 31st instead of the 24th. It's the fifth Tuesday.
Selectmen's meeting.
Oh, all right.
So we can't do the 14th?
If the paper noticing won't allow for, then I guess not. I mean, legally you can get it in, but the newspaper usually adds a few extra days.
February 14th?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, you can do the 14th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 no, I was asking about February 14th.
Yes, you can do the 14th.
Okay. Yes, Barbara?
This is Barbara. The policies and procedure manual is under board business on this, this agenda.
Yeah, Barbara, I believe it was because Jim was thinking you guys could move it to public hearing.
Okay, I got you. Excuse me.
I say we do it on the 14th. Not that I say it matters, but.
But why did Jim say we couldn't do it the?
He needs three weeks.
He needs three weeks notice.
He needs extra time for newspaper noticing.
Oh, oh, oh.
You could do it in 14 days statutorily, but not the practical newspaper publication deadlines. So looks like you're, unless you want to schedule an extra meeting, the 14th is your next available date.
It's going to be a long meeting, but.
Yeah, but if you put this as first?
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Just put this as first. We've seen it. I'm a betting man, and I'm betting no one's going to be here to discuss this. So I say we put it first, just get it done and out of the way. That way it's done and we move on.
We could also do it for like half an hour before the 7 o'clock meeting if.
Do it at 6:30.
If 6:30 is.
Right.
If you can have a quorum arrive at 6:30.
But I recommend doing this first.
That's a good idea.
Not meeting it till the end.
Yeah, I would, I would strongly suggest coming in a half hour early if everybody else could.
I'm good with 6:30, you really know.
If I might suggest, do 20 minutes for the public hearing on the land use chapter, 10 minutes for a public hearing on the policies and procedures manual.
Perfect.
And then start your meeting at 7.
I agree.
Yep.
Get them both done.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I like the idea.
So you need a motion to move the land use chapter to public hearing on February 14th at 6:30?
So moved.
As stated.
Well, who's going to second that?
I'm going to go with Dan and Bob, if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right. All right. Dennis.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Annie.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
So moved.
And then for the.
Getting a little copy and paste there, Jen?
Sorry, I didn't catch that, Annie.
I said, doing a little copy and paste, right?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
And then do we need a motion to put the land use chapter?
The policy and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And you can have that be for 6:50.
Sure.
Yep.
I move that.
I'll second.
Ooh, mixing it up.
It's like first grade, all over again.
Dan.
Yes.
I'm sorry, no, Dennis.
Aye, yes.
Annie.
Aye.
Barbara.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Jordan.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Dan.
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
And that is everything on today's agenda, and I'm just going to add one thing. We did receive a comment about videos being posted to the Newton page in a timely manner. My understanding is they're posted on YouTube. If anybody else is watching this later, they just don't get to the town website.
As fast.
As fast. So spoke with cable, and they're usually up there after they get processed by YouTube or rendered or whatever they do with them. So within a couple hours.
And I try to put, I try to post them on the website on the Thursday following the meeting. I'm not in on Wednesday, so.
Okay, so that is why it takes a couple days to get posted. Yeah, thank you for the clarification, Jim. So with.
No problem.
I have a quick question before we adjourn. So they continued their, he's trying to sell that building, the amended site plan that he wants, they continued that. Now, I watched the other meeting. Did you guys recommend, because I don't remember, and I don't know where the minutes are, to send a mailer out to all the butters for this meeting? So that's my question.
Yes, it was mailed out.
Yes.
Yes. It was like $65, Jim? So that's not my question. So had I known that, we probably should have allowed those people to speak. You guys sent a mailer out that this was going to be a public meeting on that. They showed up.
On 27-3 or 27-4?
On the lot, on the lot that has the buildings.
Yes. That's why they were all here. So that, we should have allowed them to speak because we sent that mailer out. If we didn't send that mailer out, then it's, it's nothing. But we sent it out to let them know, so they came down.
Yeah, but we didn't know that he was going to continue it.
Still can let him speak.
But there was no new information.
But there was no information, Dan, because the last time they were here.
Some of those people have personal interactions with them that they wanted to, in between that time, right? So now, those people know that it's going to be February 14th, but I don't know, I'm just saying that we did send something out telling people that this was going to happen and people showed up.
That's true.
This is Barbara. I wanted to comment on that. You make, you make a very good point, because I wasn't even thinking about, the problem is, I think most of the people who wanted to say something about that might be the people who left before they even knew when we continued this to.
Right.
I'm not sure.
I think that for, that most of them were here when we, when the motion for February 14th was made and then reclarified.
But I guess.
Thank you.
On this, to your point, Dan, that the mailer seems to get people here. So, so next time, do we do a mailer again? That's what I'm saying. Before we adjourn this meeting and go off, do we do a mailer again for February 14th?
Let me just remind you one thing, if you decide to do that, that's on our dime. We have to do it. We cannot make the applicant pay for it. He already just paid for the last one.
I think we should do it.
So here's the thing with that, and, and I talk about this all the time, and it's one word, it's accountability. They got a beef, right, with what's going on. The mailer went out, they came today. All right? So they had already made their statements about where they stood with the other meeting the last time that they came and they talked about it. All right? Now, if that happens, they should take some ownership to be paying attention to the dates that these meetings get continued and then to be showing up. All right? We're not here to hold their hand through life. Okay? We're here to conduct business and do what we're supposed to do. Those notices go out to them and they have to take some ownership of what's taking place in this town. Now, they sat here, the people that were concerned that the flyers went out, they were told that there is a continuance to February 14th. They should have made notes and put it in their phones, on their, in their notebooks or whatever, and they should be showing up to the 14th. We don't need to be sending out all the time these things. I understand maybe if it gets continued for a couple of months in a row, two, three months down the road, that would be one thing, but not from meeting to meeting.
And that's why it was sent out, because there were, it had been continued a couple of times before, and it was just sort of a reminder.
Exactly.
It's all online, too. Like, we publish the agendas in advance, they can pull it up. But I do hear your point that we should have, if, that we should have listened to them. I was under the impression that because there was no new information, I didn't feel like it was necessary. But if someone else felt differently, you, you guys all should speak up. It's not just me commenting on that, right? So, but that's how I felt about that, and that if there was, because there was new information in the next item, I was comfortable opening up for public discussion for that. So.
I have one last quick thing that I do want to just prep you guys if we're done, that at your next meeting, I do want to go through the full scope of the grant proposal with you to have you do the full sign-off. We've talked about it a lot, but we'll just do one last going through. It'll be a, it'll be a really good project, I think, for fitting with you guys, given where you are with your master plan to start working on the housing chapter. But as an aside, my office is doing the initial presentation of our regional housing needs assessment, which covers the entire Back and Hand Planning Commission region, including Newton, on the numbers of homes and the just general data related to housing that we've been collecting over the past 18 months. So that'll be presented tomorrow night. It will be available online. I think Jim may have also forwarded you the notice that was sent to all the planning boards and planning board chairs in our region. If you can't attend, which is fine, it will be streaming and we will be putting up videos of the information along with the report. The report won't be out for a few weeks, just because it's being made all nice by a graphic artist, but I can go over that basic information at our, at your next meeting so you have an idea related to the housing chapter that we're going to apply for the grant for.
Cool.
Great.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
Only right after the meeting, when it closes.
With that, I would like to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Bye.
Mr. Chairman?